Today is Tuesday, March 12th, 2024 at 4:00 PM. This meeting will be conducted in person in the City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA Section 403A. Members of the public may submit comments by using the form on the city's website under government/citycouncil/contact the council. This is a budget workshop session of the City Council and not a business meeting of the council. This meeting is open to the public but not a public hearing. The chairperson shall conduct the work session with the committee members and may elect to call upon the public in attendance for either questions or to obtain input and information. All work products will be developed by consensus and forwarded by advisory to the City Council for any further action warranting legislative action by the City Council at its business meetings and so posted and assembled. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and if you would all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For roll call, Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Counselor Stackpole, he probably will show up late. Counselor Hanselman.
Present.
Counselor Martel.
Present.
Counselor Trenchmontane.
Present.
Counselor Hitchcock, I'm glad to see you made it through the traffic.
Yes, present.
Perfect. I am Mayor Brink. Also present with us is City Manager Steve Buck and Executive Administrator Larissa Ricketts. And we have the minutes from our last City Council meeting. I'd like a motion to approve, please. Ann?
Madam Mayor, so moved.
A second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor, all those present said yes. And do we have the list for the public participation? And let me explain the public participation. Usually at our regular meetings, it's for stuff not on the agenda. This is a budget workshop, which will be different. How many names are on the list?
One.
One? And the reason I say perfect is not because I don't want to hear from y'all. It's because if I was to hear from all of you, I would have to limit the amount of time. So I have a feeling the person speaking is probably going to say what you guys are all feeling, because I finally got your email and read it. So Pam Cody, would you please take the podium? State your name and where you live, please. Is the mic up? There you go.
Is the button on? No. See if the button is on.
Okay. Well, people...
It's televised.
Hold on. Ben's coming right up, because people need to hear you on TV land. We've had a lot of fun today with our electronics here. We've had several meetings where somebody would be talking and you know how then all of a sudden the voice isn't then it is, then it isn't, then it... So it's been a lot of fun today.
Hello? Perfect. Am I working? Okay, that doesn't count as my minutes, right?
No.
All right. Because I timed this.
Take your time.
Okay.
You're doing fine.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Pam Cody, and I sent you an email yesterday. I cannot attend the public hearing on 3/19, so I'm making my public statement tonight. Over the course of my 15 years working for Sanford Schools, I taught hundreds of students from middle school through adult learner and worked directly with families while managing a family literacy program. I do not teach anymore. I'm a citizen who lives in Springvale, and I'm here today to be a voice for my former students, ones that may not have someone to advocate for them and for parents that might find this hard to do. I strongly believe that the alternative learning program for high school students, excuse me, should be a part of our pre-K through adult learning system. While you may not direct the schools on direct programming, I do feel that you lead the community as the City Council in ensuring we have an educational system that promotes students graduating from high school is everyone's business. I've worked with many, many adult learners and understand the unique challenges when someone is trying to go back to school and also understand the community costs. I outlined the research-backed impacts in emails to you in the school committee, so I will not repeat here. I will admit, I have been disheartened to hear comments from school committee and City Council discussions sharing numbers of the student population as a whole. When I was teaching up to 100 sixth graders, I did not begrudge a special education colleague for a smaller class size of eight to 12 students. It is what those students needed. There is no equity without access to literacy and education in different forms for different learners and their variability, and it means it looks different at times like our alternative learning program. With multi-generational low literacy in our community, we need to ensure that we have an educational system that provides all learners the opportunity to activate their human potential. Not investing in a program even for a small group of students will have a negative butterfly effect in our community, and this non-investment will be felt in four to five years and then continue. We want a strong learning ecosystem that ensures that all students, and specifically ones that may be at risk to drop out, are graduating with the skills they need to have the power to communicate, make informed decisions, and have access to resources and opportunities. And think about that word, opportunity. This is your business. It's everyone's business. Please support these students. You, as City Councilors, do have the opportunity to share an opinion on this topic. If this program is removed, it will most likely not ever come back. There must be a way to support this program even under a different framework and a budget that is not showing an increase of 10%. That is extremely high for homeowners, especially our senior citizens, and I'll be honest, my household, we were both shocked watching the meeting last week when that number was being discussed, and we both thought of our senior home-owning parents that live in Sanford. To close, I want to thank all of you, and I want to thank the school committee. I have a lot of respect for those that basically volunteer in these positions and truly understand the time and commitment it takes. Thank you.
Pam, thank you. Pam, you did it for under three minutes. Just to make it clear, so that people understand the process, the...
I'm clear.
You're clear?
I'm all clear.
Okay. The group up here can only make, the council can only make a decision about the bottom dollar. That's it. We cannot, nor are we allowed to tell the school committee where to spend their money. The school committee, along with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, are the people who are responsible for where the funds are spent. So even if we gave them all the money in the world that they want, they could do with what they want to do it with. Now, we can tell them our preference to something, that does not mean they have to follow it. They are the ones who are responsible for the education of all students in Sanford and Springvale and the seven sending schools. We are not. We are only responsible for the bottom dollar and trying to get whatever that bottom dollar is that will pass in June. And for every year around this time for budgeting, we hear a lot from parents, but we hear the majority of the emails and the text messages I get are from citizens. And we always have to keep in mind, what can they also afford? But we have to also pay attention to the future of Sanford and what can move Sanford ahead. Now, as many of you know, that I was a principal here at Sanford Junior High for multiple years. I was an assistant principal at the high school here for a while, and I was assistant principal at Carl Lamb and actually worked with Steve Bucier, fantastic teacher at that time, and he's probably a fantastic superintendent also. I also recognize Stacy Bissell in the back, who is, I know, you're so shy, who is still the head of the Special Ed Department here, and I want to thank you for being here. I worked under her. What a phenomenal person to work for and with. Many other people here, unfortunately, are kids who were in my classroom, which I am feeling very old all of a sudden when I look out over this audience. So, the process that's happening tonight is it's all school. Matt is going to come up here. He's going to be doing his presentation, and then we will be asking questions of him. We might get an idea of where we're going tonight, but this is not a decision-making night. Next week, the March 19th, is the public hearing, and so more information... That'll probably be a pretty packed meeting, because it's for both sides, you know, at that time. Am I right, Steve? It's both, not just the school? Yeah. Okay. So Matt, I'm going to turn it over to you. Matt Nelson is the Superintendent of Sanford Public Schools.
Thank you. My concern, my being unclear, was about public comment. We've been receiving a lot of people who want to speak, and I've been directing them to next Tuesday night City Council meeting. So that's where I think it's... I know I'm unclear, because we have probably a lot of people who wanted to speak with that.
And Pam just...
So I just wanted to make sure I'm directing people the right, giving the right information.
Because Pam is not going to be here. That's why she asked if she could speak tonight.
Okay.
And we do have that part on the agenda that always says "public participation," so I told her she could speak under that.
Okay, understood. I just wanted to make sure...
It'd be nice to know if you keep us informed about how many we're going to have, so we can keep our other agenda tight, because we're meeting on Thursday for that.
Yeah. I, in just our comments, I've been talking about that's the time for public comment. We, like you, we've received a lot of information from concerned stakeholders, and so I just want to make sure I'm directing them in the best way to be able to come back and do that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak this evening. I, and to be able to present the school department budget, I thank the City Council for that opportunity. Want to thank you for the position that you're in, in terms of the support for the school department, but also the entire city and community of Sanford and all of its citizens. That's a huge task, and I want to acknowledge you being in a very difficult spot, but very much appreciated that you're coming back and working, looking for all of Sanford. I'm here tonight to talk about the schools with that. We, this presentation, there's going to be some things that are repetitive from the overview that I gave you last Tuesday. Also, the hope is this evening that we can dig into a little bit deeper. With that, we've also been working along. I'm going to present the budget initially that had the, that was presented last Tuesday. We too have been doing some work, and so I do have some other recommendations at the end that will also be able to come back and go forward. I didn't want to include those in the presentation, because that could probably get pretty confusing. It's probably already confusing enough for you anyways. We're going to do our best to try to break that down. This budget for us, I, and I also look forward to the questions, because this is not a budget that we just started working on. We've been working on it a long time. That's the case where, in my mind, I sometimes may forget to explain things in more detail because of just my personal familiarity with the budget and us working on it. Something starts in the fall, as I mentioned, and then we meet at the central office level. It starts with our administrators in the fall. We meet at central office with administrators in December and January, and then we involve our school committee at the end of January, and the school committee meets the month of February to be able to get a budget that is approved and presented to you. Our goals, as you can see, similar to what was said in the comments before and also in Pam's comments as well. We are trying to do everything that we can to best meet the needs of our students, but we're also very aware of what that impact is going to be on our taxpayers and obviously their ability for our community to be able to pay for that. And that's something that we've always done. It's incredibly challenging, as you know, but that's our overall goal. As we look at that, priorities that we have, obviously, for us in this budget, is that learning environment. We're looking for providing a safe and engaging learning working environment for both our students and our staff. We want to be able to provide them access to learning. This is a budget of over 3,228 students, and that's from pre-K all the way up to grade 12. The budget also has a separate piece for Sanford Community Adult Education. We want to make sure that our schools are welcoming and accessible to all students. All students, all 3,228, 3,228 of them. And we also, at the same time, want to make sure that we are providing the best, but also remaining competitive around the surrounding schools. Education, there's a lot of challenging, changing trends right now. We want to make sure that what we're doing is being able to, be able to offer all of our students the best opportunities and also to do that with the best staff and not only recruiting, but also retaining employees. Lot of assets in the Sanford School Department. Very proud to be part of the Sanford School Department. Sometimes what you'll hear is there's a negative connotation to education these days. That's a narrative that's out there. I'm here to tell you it's false. There are challenges. There are challenges, no doubt, but right now, I would put our students and our staff, our facilities, I would put that up against anyone in terms of that. We're making a difference here each day. I'm very proud of our hiring. That's something that's been a priority. We made that a priority. And you can look at, we've been able to, between funding streams, to be able to upgrade all of our facilities. Proud of those facilities. The community support is something that also is very much an asset that we have. That's something that, you don't always find that in different areas and different school departments. That's something for us that, when you add up all of these assets that we have, what it comes down to is trust, and I believe that we have the trust of our community. That's something we don't take lightly. That's something we work hard each day to make sure that we can be able to do that. We're not perfect. There are challenges that come in to be able to do those things, but there's a lot of assets and a lot of things to be proud of. There are challenges, as I mentioned, with that. Really, these challenges are making harder to focus on the purpose of education, and that's teaching and learning. There are problems that we're encountering, that we're seeing. We want to be able to focus on the learning environment and make sure that all of our students can learn and all of our teachers and our staff can do their jobs. There are mental health needs. We're seeing that all around us. That's not something that's in society and in schools. We're not immune to any of that. We're seeing that. It's starting in schools, and that's something right now that is a real challenge for us, that we want to make sure that all of our students can learn, and we don't want to be able to just disrupt the learning of the other students. Also for us, there's rising costs. Rising costs that I think everyone is being able to see that also are having a huge impact on us. Sometimes when you look at costs, you're looking at that through staffing, and you're looking at that through compensation. For us, it's more than also having compensation. It's also making sure we have the adequate resources in place to be able to support our students and our staff to be able to do that. There are some expenses district-wide in this budget. Main state retirement is something that is put onto the schools with that. That actually, for the non-teachers, that went down. So that actually decreased, and there was a savings there of $8,117. Main state retirement for teachers stayed the same. The Harvard Health Insurance, I've got an update at that later in the, later in the presentation, but right now, we had put in there a 17.5% increase that was over $1 million. And as I said, I have an update of that. We do have a couple of our smaller, our bargaining groups, our custodians and administrators who are on Anthem. We won't find out what that is till probably maybe the end of this month, but more than likely April. We've put in an 8% increase there, and that's what that cost is. Just like the city, there is a new paid family medical leave tax that totals 1%, and so we're following guidance and have put in 50% of that. That starts January 1st, 2025, and so that 1% will be shared with staff, and so that half, that 50% of that 1% for us has an impact of $85,226 on this budget for that. All right, let's dig into it. As you know, our budget is done by article, and so it's broken up by articles, so I'm going to try to go into article, also show you what is the changes there, what are also some of the things that have been removed, and try to be able to do that, as I mentioned, for all of the articles. Article one is our biggie. That's the regular instruction. The turn the page for that is 6.2% over $1 million. There are added positions in that Article one. They are on the left-hand side. We have invested in pre-K, and last year, we were able to have six pre-K classes throughout the district. They serve 96 kids. We're supposed to have a ratio of 16 to two. That's one teacher, one ed tech. We worked through the grants to be able to come back and help that. So last year, 50% of three of our pre-K ed techs were covered by a grant. We knew that that was going to be something that would be moving over into this budget. We're also looking at putting social workers, keeping social workers at all of our elementary, middle, and there will be a special ed one in a different article, but you see those social workers are something that we'd like to keep. They're added into the local budget. They are coming from ESER funds. I got another slide to show you that, to be able to break that down. We also have a large increasing multilingual learner population, so you'll see two ESOL teachers up there. One of those was covered by ESER funds last year. With our increase in population, we still have another one also added in there along with that. We also have elementary art and music teachers added to this budget coming over from ESER positions. There are a number of positions that are not continuing. We realized if we were going to be transferring positions, adding positions, that we were going to have to also be able to take away. And so positions not continuing. We've got two teachers at Sanford Middle School. We've got a phys ed health teacher at the high school. We've got our attendance coordinator at the high school. Five ed techs that, through our elementary schools. One admin assistant moved to a school year only. Department head stipend, what that'll get us. And then there's also two other positions that we're moving out of the local budget for two academic coaches. Those all total $734,000. And so when you look at what that expense increase is, and then you look at the ESOL funding that we get, and I'll talk more about that in our subsidy later on, you'll see the impact there is $128,382 less in terms of Article one. Moving over, continuing in Article one, there was a fourth-grade teacher position that's requested. That was something that was not funded. We're looking at big changes in our class sizes. We knew that was coming. That was a plan that we have. We are looking at, we feel we've moved to those class sizes that, to a point where we really don't want to go anymore on those class sizes, because that's where you're going to start to see more of an impact. There are a number of ESER positions not continuing. You can see the majority of those are coming from classroom teachers. So when I say that those class sizes are going back to what they were and maybe even a little bit larger than what they were prior to the pandemic. There was items that were requested in this budget. We had cut a lot of our supplies before we even went through this budget process. Our administrators knew how tight this budget was going to be, and so there was a, we gave them a lower number to start for all of this. So we're giving teachers less in this budget. Here on the right were some items that were needed, requested, but those are some of those one-time cost items that we've removed from the budget. They total $108,843. Article two is special education. Special education has an increase of 14.7%. The turn the page part of that is 9.4, just over $1 million. We do have four of our ESER positions that we are moving in to this budget, and then there's also positions that are not continuing. There's a bridge teacher and a middle school teacher that, and also moving a bridge to ed techs into the IDEA grant and moving an admin assistant 25% of that cost into IDEA as well. That will give us a reduction there of $282,667, where the increase is 264. There's a major part here for our additional costs is our additional outside placement costs, and that's going up $569,400. A lot of that, the major part of that is in response to a new law. The new law is, you used to be charged for all the days that the students attended those outside placements. So if a kid was absent, we would not be charged that day. Now, the law's changed that they're going to be charged for every day that they could have been there, okay? That they should be there, and so whether they're absent or not, so that's an impact for us of $569,400. We did receive, and I'll go over this in the subsidy, but we did receive an additional subsidy for special education over $800,000. So when you subtract all of that out, you'll see the net expense increase of $550,000, but when we less the funding of that of $801,605, you'll see that that impact is $250,861 less. Also in Article two, there are ESER positions that are not continuing, and those total just under $300,000. Those will be behavior interventionists, both district-wide one, and a position that we had assigned to the middle school. I'll talk more about that later, and then a self-contained ed tech at Carl J. Lamb and an ed tech at MCS. Those positions are not continuing. Article three is CTE. This is Sanford Regional Technical Center. The turn the page of that is up 6.5%, $264,674. With this, I am, we've done a lot of work in this area, because initially what had happened was the arrangement that we had with our sending schools was that Sanford would not participate in the capital improvement plan. So the, whatever was charged to capital improvements would be shared amongst the other sending schools. We would take care of the operating costs that would come back for running the SRTC. Well, where we are in Sanford, in York County, the CTE funding model from the state is based on a statewide model, from us in Sanford all the way up to San Agate and Frenchville, okay? The same formula is used. Down here, we pay more for our staffing and whatnot, so there is going to be a gap between what the state funds and what we're be able to pay. That gap was getting to be too much for us to put on the backs of Sanford taxpayers, so we've worked with the sending schools through a per-pupil cost and changing that. And so that got us just under $200,000 in revenue that we have not before, that we're able to come back and reduce that tax burden. In the part, one of the programs we have in our early childhood program of SRTC is one of our pre-K classrooms is operated there. What a great opportunity for the learning for our students. We have a teacher and an ed tech in that pre-K, but at the same time, we also need to be able to have some coverage for that, so we have an ed tech that is currently being covered in ESER. We're transferring that one over into the local, and as we're able to do that, that helps that particular area, but then it's also being able to be also helpful throughout the other SRTC programs throughout the day. So it's a piece of that day. We'll go to the, to helping be able to provide coverage so that we can give the necessary breaks that are per contract. We'll go to the, to helping be able to provide coverage so that we can give the necessary breaks that are per contract to our teacher and ed tech. But then they're also used that way. There were some additional positions that we requested, that SRTC requested, that have not been accepted into this budget. And there was also the supplies, some supplies that were requested. We didn't fund those. We were able to move those over to the Perkins Grant. And so we've done some moving to the Perkins Grant and offset that by moving some of the supplies. That also is, is helping us in saving costs in terms of maximizing what we're be able to cover in the Perkins Grant to be able to do that. So as you look at that, the impact there is three hundred and ten, one hundred and seventy-one overall to the good. Okay? For SRTC. And that's something right now that we're very proud of in terms of what we offer in the facility. And I know our sending schools, even though they're in a situation where they're paying more for that, they also understand the impact and also the deal and the great opportunity that that is for kids and for our students. Article four is other instruction. This is really the athletics portion of that. The turn the page of that is forty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-seven. A lot of that is, that turn the page is what you're looking at for contracts that we have for officials. So that we know what the referees are going to be getting paid for all of our contests. Those go up each year. And so you're going to see added additions to that and also what is going to be added on to the stipends. There's some added expenses there. We do have a first-team volleyball in this budget. Later on, I'll talk about an offset that will be going to that. And then there's also a student accident insurance district-wide that we want to be able to make sure that we have in place. So anybody who's interested in participating in our athletic programs will be able to do so. And family ID is one of those online programs that we can use to help parents sign their children up. We have it at the high school. It works well. Middle school, we currently don't have it. We're kind of in the dark ages there. It's in the old paper and pen opportunity at the end. I know I don't like adding money to budget, but at the same time, twelve hundred dollars, we feel is going to be a nice worthy investment to help. There are a number of things that were requested in this budget that we removed. A lot of those, you can see are equipment-based. They total eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty. As always, we're probably going to be looking to some of our other resources. That includes the Red and White Foundation, who's been very supportive of the Sanford Athletic Program. Our Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation can also be something that we look for to be able to help us get those types of things that are needed. There are some other things that were requested and not funded. We do have an athletic trainer. We're looking at for some additional hours there as needed, but not something that we can sustain in this budget removed. We're also looking at an assistant athletic director position. We looked at that because of there was the position of the mowing that is moved over from the city budget into the school's budget. The city was trying to be able to combine that position in a way to be able to help. Ran into some difficulties and challenges doing that. We're, have it with us. We were looking at also trying to be creative to see if we could combine that to some areas. At the end of the day, as much as that would have been nice, the cost for that outweighed that to the point where that was something that was not requested. And so there you see the impact in terms of the additions to the budget of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four. Article five is our student and staff support. This is where you'll see counselors, nursing, library, curriculum, and technology. That's increased four point four percent, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. The turn the page was just over a hundred and sixty thousand, four point one. We do have some added positions in there. We have, I'll talk more about that. In this eleven point, eleven percent increase budget, there is a middle school counselor in that position in this budget. I'll talk more about that in some of the recommended changes we have at the end. We also have our grade level leaders. There's stipends that go along with those positions. We have restructured those at a savings, but there is still a cost of fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-two that were picked up by a grant, transitioning that over into the local. There were some requested and not funded mentor stipends and restructuring tech, technology repair of doing that. That was going to allow us to save twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So when you look at that net expense increase, and then we did receive some additional funding for our gifted and talented, you'll see that the impact of the local budget there is forty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. As I mentioned, I've got some recommended changes to that coming in. Article six is system administration. That's our central office school committee. That's increased six point five percent. And that's just under seventy thousand dollars. There's an added position here of an admin assistant, fifty percent coming over from the title grant into the local. I'm going to make some further recommended reductions on this area later on. But in the budget that was presented to you last week, you saw the impact of being thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars for our article six. Article seven is school administration. This is a school administrators and general office. That's increased four point two percent. That's over a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy-six. A major part of that is currently at the Sanford Middle School. We have a nursing assistant, admin assistant, CNA that helps us in that particular position. That was a position that originally we covered with ESER. We have over nine hundred students at Sanford Middle School. The data that we have that is kept with all the different medical needs that are coming in and the volume is something for us that we feel that position is warranted and needed. That's something that would be adding a lot of liability to us based on the different needs and the volume that are coming in. We do have some positions that are not continuing. A, at the high school, a counseling receptionist in the school counseling office there. And then also some, another ESER position, middle school admin assistant not continuing. So when you look at that, that impact there is overall is twenty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars to the local budget. Article eight is transportation. That's increased by eighteen point eight percent or four hundred and two thousand dollars, almost four hundred and three. And that's the contracted rate increase. We've been fortunate in that we signed a contract. Our last contract was a three-year contract with the opportunity to also renew for an additional year and an additional year. So it was a five-year contract in essence. Each one of those years went up by three percent. So transportation, we don't own our own buses. We contract those out. And so that's where we're at the, we put the contract out to bid. And so that's where we're coming in and we're really getting walloped here in terms of what you can see that increase is. Some of that is, the major part of that is wages. But also, we are also going to increase costs for our other trips that go after school, primarily our athletic trips. And then we're also, for our special ed transportation, many of our special ed transportation, we need a monitor on that bus. Those monitor costs have also gone up. So at the end of the day, that increase to us for transportation is just over four hundred thousand dollars. The funding that we received for subsidy was only a hundred and three thousand. So that impact of the budget is just under three hundred thousand dollars when it comes to transportation. Article nine is our facilities. I mentioned the mowing from the city. That's something that we've added to our budget, able to do. Well, when I say mowing from the city, that's the high school athletic fields that are mowed. We've got a nice working relationship with our rec department and being able to continue to work there. They were having a hard time filling that position to the point that it was impacting their ability to get to the parks. They met with us. We're trying to look at it to see what can we do to be able to combine that. We're still looking at that. We're still trying to stay open to that. Nonetheless, it's still going to be an impact addem to our budget. One of the things that was requested that we did not fund and remove from the budget was the backup boiler at Willard. This was brought up last week. People wondering, we are getting a brand-new boiler at Willard. We didn't feel as, you know, it was necessary that it'd be nice to have the backup. Knowing that we're getting a brand-new boiler, we felt with the budget challenges ahead of us that that was something that we could postpone and be able to try to capture in future years. I do have another position here in some recommended staffing reduction. I'll talk a lot about that later on with that. So there's going to be some changes coming to this one, but as we look at it, the impact is twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Debt is article ten. This is really just a pass-through for us. When you look at what the debt is that we have on our facilities for the state-funded projects and coming from the high school and technical center, that debt is going down over time. So this one is decreased with that by a hundred and seventy-one thousand. That is offset by the funding that we receive. So there's no impact to article ten or debt. Article eleven is all other expenditures. This is where we put Sanford Performing Arts Center and WSSR TV. You have the turn the page there, twelve thousand, five hundred and twenty-two. Items were requested that were not funded. So you have a zero impact coming in article eleven. Adult education, separate from the articles. As you look at that, we had an increase of five point eight percent. The term, that was thirty-three thousand, seventy-nine dollars. Much of that was looking at some class expansion. A lot of that was with our multilingual learners. But we were able to actually decrease the impact there because our state subsidy decreased by five thousand, eighty-eight dollars. Because we received an additional forty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three in subsidy for that. So there's actually a reduction to the local budget of ten thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven. All right. So one of the things I do want to speak about because I, I think it's important in terms of added positions to the budget. There are positions that are added to the local budget, but they're not new positions for us. And so I want to discuss the approach that we came back with ESER. Because I know there was a concern when those ESER funds came in, that when they did, that there was going to be the time for us to be able just to move those into the local. And we knew when we accepted those funds, there would be challenges. We have moved those positions into the local. But I want to make sure that I don't feel I've gone back on my word. Because if you look to the right, there's positions that are removed from the local budget. The people who are here in this room as a school committee, the people who are here as administrators know when it comes to anything for budgets, when people ask for an addition, I'm usually asking, is there a reduction or is there a restructuring that we can do? And so as you can look in terms of the ESER positions moved in, these are the ones that are not Matt Nelson saying, these are the things that we need. This is our team building the budget to come back to look at it, to say, these are the things that we need to do to be able to reach our priorities. They total over a million dollars. But at the same time, over on the right-hand side, you see the other positions that have been removed from the local budget. They total over a million dollars and eighty thou, one million, eighty thousand, seventy-seven dollars. Okay? And so that's something that we're doing that so that, and I want people to know, those positions on the right-hand side, there's impact. There's impact losing those positions. But that's something that as we came back and prioritized, we're constantly trying to be able to meet the evolving needs of what are in front of us. And so to be able to come back and do that. When you look at ESER positions going in the local budget and people wondering, hey, Nelson, I thought you said those weren't going into the budget. Okay? I come back and can look people in the eye to say at the same time, hold your horses. There's also the opportunity that we're coming back in there to be able to other, make reductions that we're coming back to prioritize those needs that we can be able to do that. I'm sure there'll be some questions on that, but I wanted to be able, and there's people who are asking what that breakout is. And so there's where you can see the breakout. Now, there are positions, as I mentioned, that are ESER positions that are not continuing. We knew that. And there's a list and one grant position down below, the substance use counselor for the middle school and the high school. We knew that when we went in to be able to use that funds. It's had a great impact on our school district and one that we wouldn't change for that. And then you can also see a list of there of the positions that are come, that were currently in this year, not in the local budget, but they were part of the Sanford School Department. Okay? They're coming back. We also had a request to see what positions we've had that have been open for over ninety days. We've had four of those. The first one is a behavior interventionist at Sanford Middle School. There's an asterisk there. We haven't filled that position. It's an ESER position. We had it filled, but we moved the person from that position into a special education teacher position at the middle school that we prioritize as being more important. We've also had three ed tech positions that have been open for over ninety days. The three of those have been filled with long-term subs. As much as we have qualified people that we want them to be in those positions, those people don't want to be in those positions because they still like some of the flexibility that they have of being a long-term sub. So positions filled, okay? But being filled with a long-term sub for them. Those are the four positions that we have that have been open for over ninety days. All right, let's talk subsidy. Okay? In our subsidy, we received increased subsidy of one million, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. So in the past, we've kind of broken that down for you. Not going to do that this evening. That's, that's almost a whole evening that we can dig into that. But here's breaking it down for you, what you can see in the change in subsidy. Anything that's in the parentheses was a decrease in terms of that. When you add all of that up, as I mentioned, it comes out to one million, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and seven. There's a couple of those that I want to talk about specifically. I want to talk about in the Peach section, second section, section two, ELL. Our English language learners went from fifty-seven students to a hundred and three students. So you see we received an increase of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. We're using that increase to pay for the staffing for that particular issue, for that particular area. Also, look to special education. You can look at special education in the third section, section three. We received eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and seventy-eight dollars there. That's something that we're also putting towards some of the other positions that are needed there for that coming over from the ESER positions you had. You'll notice that there's our positions that were in the local budget that we've also removed there. I'll talk about that a little bit more as we look at it. Okay? I do want to talk about the sex, the fourth section in blue, valuation. We lost one million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars in valuation. Okay? That's their formula saying Sanford, your valuation's going up. They have a formula that goes in the last three years. We know our valuation has gone up. That's where the impact is. We were fortunate that the Department of Ed adjusted their mill rate. They went from six point nine seven down to six point six two. So instead of taking that hit of one point, one million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, we're only taking a hit for five hundred and sixty-seven thousand. That's five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars less in subsidy that we received because our valuation is increasing in the formula believing that that valuation should be transferred back to the local. Okay? That's how the subsidy works. That's as you're looking at what we received there, breaking it down. We work hard in this. This is something for us that when we look at our subsidy, we are paying attention to what we have to enter because we want to make sure our ratios are where they are so that we can maximize funding. So we want to make sure that every teacher we have, they're entered into the system with exactly what they have for a degree in education. As those of you who are parents of students, you've probably heard me reach out to you, asking you to get your paperwork back when it comes back to about being the economically disadvantaged paperwork. when it comes back to about being the economically disadvantaged paperwork. You might even say, Nelson, that's borderline harassment. I understand that, but we want that because we want to make sure we're accurate with all of that because we're maximizing that funding for the formula that you can be able to see that. Okay, so that's a subsidy and a breakdown of what we have. You'll notice that our enrollment for average attending pupils went down on that first line. I mentioned this last week. Our elementary pupil count went up by 45.5. Still looking for that half an elementary kid, but. And then we have the high school went down by 7.5. And what happens is the elementary rate, student rate, is less than the high school rate. And so when you factor out all the math, it goes down. Even though our enrollment was going up, it was going up with, at the elementary level, and therefore we were getting less coming back. I'll talk more about that later on as well. Okay, here's our subsidy history. You can look at it going back to fiscal year 2022, right up to now. Sanford's a high receiver. You can look at our state subsidy of 76%, okay? And the local is just under 24% adding up. And you can see how that's been able to work. I want to point this out, that this is the floor of the model of the, what the school department, the Department of Education calls the EPS model, Essential Programs and Services. We pay attention to that so that we can make sure that we maximize the funding. Okay, so that's where, when we enter everything in, the formula works in a way to say, sure, if you want to add more into that area, we're going to take away your funding because that is where you made that decision that you can have to pay local on that, pay more on the local. So what we're looking at is making sure that we're maximizing that formula to our benefit. I talked about CTE, all right? SRTC, the state funding that we receive from there is just under $4 million. Okay, we also receive over $200,000 by belonging to a service center. The state of Maine rewards people who are working together in collaboration with other, with other school districts to be able to collaborate for savings. And so we do that. We're part of the Southern Maine Regional Service Center. And we're looking at ways that we can be able to amongst the schools, how can we be able to save in terms of that? So there's savings that we capture that way, but the state also rewards that when it comes to our total funding. So you'll see our total funding for fiscal, in this budget, is $44,359,64. Okay? I want to, going back to that, hold on, where am I going here? I want to point out that if you can look up above, remember that valuation that I talked about of $567,000? That's the difference between the local share in fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25. You'll see that that $567,498 difference. If you look at fiscal year '24, the difference there between '24 and '23 is $575,702. Based on our valuation, that's what they feel the locals should pay more. Going back to fiscal year 2023, $431,760 difference. So those are the changes in valuation that have gone on, especially after the pandemic, that you can see that values in York County, Cumberland County, valuation has gone up. And so they come back and say they feel that that's a change in ability for people to be able to pay. When it comes to pay, I want to point this out. This is our per-pupil comparison. This is based off the 2023-2024 school year. We've taken the debt out of that and we've taken CTE, SRTC out of that so it can be an apples-to-apples comparison. You'll notice our per-pupil costs for our 32,028 students, or I should say, I'm not sure what our total was last year. Okay, this is based on last year, was $13,5278. Okay, that's with an economically disadvantaged percentage of over 50. You'll see the state share of education was 76.31%. You'll also know that we are, in York County, last. We pay the lowest per-pupil comparison. Okay, the next one ahead of us is RSU 57. Okay, if you take the difference between their $14,750 and you multiply that by our student population, you'll see that we're just $3.8 million less. Move that down to the state average. The state average is $16,426. If you take that difference and get it to our population, you would see that that would be nine, over $9 million. York County average, higher than the state average. You make that difference, we're 12.3. I don't say that, I don't say that in ways to be able to come back and make people feel bad. I say that to come back and pat ourselves on the back for the work that we're doing with that to let you know, we're coming in there to make sure we're doing this in a way that doesn't have excess stuff that we don't need. Okay, but I think it's important to be able to point that out when it comes back for what we're looking for when it comes back to budget. There are revenue changes in this budget. Health insurance, we saw that huge increase in the impact that it had on our budget. Where, to be able to help offset some of that, we're using $475,000 of our health insurance reserves. We've also using some of our fund balance, $500,000 in fund balance. I already talked about the changes at SRTC in our sending schools, being able to work together and almost $200,000 in revenue there. So there's where you're going to see revenue changes that are also included in this budget. Speaking of school reserves and fund balance, I showed you this last week. You can see our health insurance reserves. We've set up these four reserve accounts, health insurance, fuel, special education, and capital. We've done that in points where those are sometimes the areas that can really have fluctuations that come back to really have an impact on our budget. You can see what we had for an audit of 2023 in that amount for those four areas. In last, this current budget that we're in, you can see how much that we used. We used $54,720 in health insurance, $40,000 in fuel, unexpected special education costs, $119,449, and then our capital, $41,950. In this budget, we're proposing to use $475,000 of those reserves. And then you can see what the estimated balance is. The unaside fund balance, right now, based on our audit for, in the fiscal year 2023, that came in at 2.7%. All right, you can see that what we have, an estimated balance of $1,063,954. So in the budget we're currently in, we're looking at a carryover of $850,621. That was something also that was not done, that decision wasn't made lightly. You can also see that we're looking at reducing that $850 down to $500,000. There you can see the fund balance history, going back to fiscal year '19. You can see there that our fund balance was in the negative back in 2019. We were able to build that up. We didn't use any carryover in fiscal year '20. In '21, $71,137. Fiscal year '22, $915,000. This current budget, $850,000. So you can look at where that is for that. After our estimated percentage of carryover by using that $500,000 is going to be 1.6%, $1,063,954. Our audit, our auditor recommends that that fund, that carryover be at 3%. We're going to be down to 1.6. In terms of where we are and the other schools that the audit uses, we're on the low end for sure. Okay, but I also feel like it's necessary for us to be able to pull that. I don't want to take any more from that because a district our size, you don't know what else can be able to come up in terms of that. I do want to talk about sustainability. I appreciated the dialogue last Tuesday after the school budget. I think some of the comments that I heard from some of the council was, this might be a one-year blip. This might be just one bad year. I wish that was the case. It's not. We, looking ahead, I've already talked about valuation. That valuation that hits us, that three-year average, it's not going down. Next year, okay, we see that going up, $344,200,000, and that's going to have, impact our subsidy, 1.7 million if the mill rate stayed the same for what they have this year. Okay? So it's not a one-year bump. Now, the other thing that goes right along our state subsidy, we're a high receiver. So valuation impacts that. Your valuation goes up, your subsidy goes down. The other one that goes right along with that is your student enrollment. Our student enrollment's been growing. I'm concerned looking ahead to next year. I say that because since October 1st to last Friday, we're down 17 students. 17 students less last Friday compared to where we were on the October 1st enrollment. We also have a large senior graduating class. And what we anticipate for an incoming kindergarten class, we're going to have less kindergartners coming in than their seniors going out. Once again, another thing to hit that, to hit our, to hit that. So when we talk about sustainability, and that's not something that's news to us, we're being able to be able to probably be aware of that. But I want the council to understand that, to be able to be looking at that because I hope to be here next year in the same spot. And I hope I'm looking at the same people. And if I am, I want to be able to come back and let you know that that's a concern that we have in terms of the sustainability for that. All right, I talked about the budget we presented last year, last week was over 11%. We got, we heard the dialogue from the city council that said that is too high. And also the idea of rather than waiting until the end of March or as we went through this process, trying to give us a head start to be able to look at that. So we were able to have a school committee workshop last evening before our regular meeting. And so I do have some considerations coming out of that meeting to be able to present to you this evening. What I do ask is that I may not be giving you a lot of the specifics on this because I have not had the chance to talk to the people who are going to be impacted in these areas. That's important to me. We pride ourselves over the time when we've had to have to have let people go or lose positions that that's, do everything we can to not let that be a blindside. So I'm not trying to be vague. I'm trying to protect that so that we can be able to, be able to handle those difficult conversations appropriately. The other thing that's coming back that also makes it hard is right on the top one, our health insurance adjustment. We had a budget item in there of 17.5%. Our benefits person that we work with actually thought that was too low. She had run percentages to have us over 20%. The Harvard Pilgrim who we work with, their renewal came out at 20%, 20-point-something. But they also realized that major impact and realizing that we've been, had a relationship, good customers with them, a good working relationship. They put us at 17.5%. Okay, you're saying, well, how do you have $165,606 there? Well, one of the things they've talked about is, hey, we will give you a 15% rate if you don't go out to bid with anybody else. That's that savings between the 15%. I'm careful with that because we're ordering this process that we have a meeting, an insurance meeting tomorrow so that our benefits person can come in to weigh in exactly what we've got for options in terms of whether or not we go out to bid. I feel comfortable that you're going to see savings there of that amount. I'm hopeful for savings better than that. But right now, I'm comfortable being able to put that amount up there. I mentioned the athletics offset. We're going to add something. What is something that we just can't always continue to add? Worked with athletic director Lemlin. That first-team volleyball is primarily for incoming ninth and 10th graders at the high school. The offset will be first-team field hockey. Okay, so the $6,171. Do I wish that we would have all of the, all of the participation numbers to fill those positions? Sure, the reality of that is, that's not realistic. We expect with the popularity of volleyball of where that is, that you're going to see an athletics offset, $6,171. Our electricity costs, you're seeing an adjustment up there of $20,277. That's something that, we just got that. Our business administrator Cheryl Fornier has signed that agreement, three-year agreement. It starts in November. So the savings that we will have from November to the end of June in this budget would be $20,277. So that's an adjustment that we can make. We're also looking at some reorganization in central office. That will also lead to savings of $36,775. We're also looking at some reorganization in maintenance. That will be a savings of $71,179. And we're also looking at the school council position that I talked about before that was, is currently filled as an ESER position. Removing that and removing that from the budget, $74,953. Okay? All of those are done, well, I will say those last three are done understanding that there's going to be impact in terms of removing those. Then you'll see an additional month of funding for ESER positions moved to local budget. Well, what the heck are you talking about that? Okay, our ESER funding is the deadline or the time that we're able to expend all of those funds goes to September 30th, 2024. Okay, you'll notice there was a position in there that was not filled. It's been open for 90 days. That's the middle school interventionist. We had it filled, but we had to move that position to a teaching position. We prioritize that as more important. And so with that, with ESER funds, there's some savings there that we have in our ESER funds. Also looking at some of our upcoming summer program. We feel that we can hold off on ESER funds. We can hold off that those positions that are added into our budget that are coming over from ESER that I showed you, we can get one month funding for each one of those positions. One-twelfth of funding for those positions. So for every position that's in there, one-twelfth of that position, as it currently stands, that's $75,418. Okay, that's us looking at, all right, we didn't fill that position. We've got some of the little extra funds to cover that $75,418. That will give you a budget reduction, total there of $450,379. I want to come back to that net change in staffing. Okay, so I showed you what we had for ESER positions that were being moved over. The local positions as the offset for those that we weren't having. This breaks it down for you by article. If we do add in those two and a half positions, you'll see that that's under Article 11, savings of those, $182,907. You'll see what the added is. You'll see what the reduction is. Remember, we also have those two ESL positions, the two special ed teacher positions and two ed tech. If you put that funding back in for subsidy, you'll then see the total, $867,722 as an add when you subtract out that subsidy for those, for ESL and special ed. And then you'll see the reduction of $1,262,984. And then you'll see the reduction of one million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four. What does that mean? Last week, when you were here, you saw that budget with taxation eleven point one percent. If we're able to come back with those recommended changes this evening of totaling four hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine, that would make our expenses down to five point six. And that would bring taxation down from eleven point one to eight point four. Everyone, everyone on our school committee is struggling with a budget that meets the needs of our students and also the impact that it has on taxation. Our school committee cares deeply about the Sanford community. They care deeply about the Sanford schools, care deeply about our students. Three of our school committee members feel that an eight point four percent increase in taxation is still too much for a majority of our taxpayers. As superintendent, I share that concern and I struggle with this budget. I'm not blind to the needs of the Sanford community. But in my position, I'm tasked with meeting the educational needs of our students. All of our students. All three thousand, two hundred and twenty. To me, it doesn't matter if that student is in part of our pre-K program. It doesn't matter if that person is going to be performing in our band fest this evening that I'm going to or the theater production that's going to be later this month. We talk about also looking at positions that are in there that are athletics. Our middle school athletics, so important for kids to be able to have that opportunity at that age. First team sports, also very important for our kids to be, as they're navigating coming into high school, to be able to have that opportunity. Sanford Regional Technical Center. We talked about that earlier. Students with disabilities. Life skills. Learning disabilities. Students with medical needs. Students right now who have challenges with anxiety to the point that it's almost crippling for them to be able to come back and to be able to be part of our school. Advanced placement. Our best students. Gifted and talented. It does not matter who the student is or what they are. Our challenge, my challenge is to find a budget to be able to meet that need. We have a saying in the Sanford School Department. All students matter and every adult is important. It doesn't matter what comes our way in the Sanford School Department. We're pretty resilient. Construction, delays, sure, bring it on. Got to close down a school, no problem. We'll move MCS around. Ninth graders, eighth graders, come on down to the high school for a year. Doesn't matter. Pandemic? Come on. Bring it on. Swatting of, yeah, not, sorry, not again. Okay? Not again. Definitely there. Swatting event, probably the most serious one that a school in Maine has received? Yeah, that was Sanford. New Mainers? Come on. All right, so we come back every day. People behind me here, the people that are stakeholders in our kids, our families, our staff, pretty darn resilient. I'm advocating for the proper resources for our students and our staff to do what I feel is the most important work there is. Under the circumstances, I'm proud of this budget. I realize its impact. I know as counselors, the challenge that you have to be able to come back and meet the needs of everyone. We have done our best here to be creative, to restructure, to look at those offsets. If we're coming back and moving things into local, all of that has an impact. I would say if we go forward with this part, and if those are what we have to do, we'll do it. But I'm going to tell you, I'm concerned about anything that goes below this is going to be cuts that you're now talking about programming. Programs, specific programs. You heard me list a whole just variety of those. All students matter, every adult's important. I don't want to get to a point where we're pitting those against each other. We have to, we will, and we'll come back and we'll be able to do our work for that. Summary, there's where you see, that's the, that's usually what has always been part of your sheet. That when you look at that variance, that bottom line total net taxation, we're looking at eight point four percent. I'm sure unintentionally I might have confused people. I hope not. So I'm here to answer any questions that people may have in terms of the school budget.
Matt, I want to thank you for your presentation. You are probably one of the most passionate people that I've ever heard present a budget. To have the stuff, the knowledge in your head and your ability to communicate is just amazing. So I really appreciate how you present. Because I'm probably more familiar with the school budget than any other budget, I found it very clear and understanding. But I do have a few things that I would like clarified. First of all, and a few things I just want to point out. I want to point out eighteen percent transportation increase. That is huge and it's something you can't control. And so I think as we look at your budget, we have to remember that that's totally out of our control. Um, you talked about, um, nursing, um, that you were adding a nurse.
No.
You weren't?
Nursing assistant.
Nursing assistant. I'd like to point out nursing has changed since we were in, especially since I was in school. I'm a little bit older than most of you here. But most of the people here, um, I just remember from the twenty years I was a principal at the different schools, the types of nursing was significantly different than it used to be. So those are like the unsung heroes for some of the stuff that they have to do. Um, so I do see the need for that. I would have even seen the need for a full nurse. So just knowing what's going on in our schools.
Wait, to be clear there, we do have a full nurse. This is an assistant to come on. That was a position we moved on, moved with the ESSER funds that we had in to be able to come back and do that. And nursing has changed for that. The volume is there. That's something that you'll, you'll see that that is something that is, uh, for us really important as a need.
It is. And something simple that people might not be aware of, that nurses are now changing feeding tubes that are on the intestines and I can't fully explain it because I don't totally understand it. But it is amazing that that's now happening within our schools that, because that's the type of disabled child that we now have present. So it's, it's very different. There's, um, a couple of things we talked about, counselors and social workers. A lot of people don't understand there's a big difference in those two jobs and why both of them are needed within our schools. So would you mind just taking a moment and explaining the difference between a social worker and a counselor?
Sure, so, um, the, um, our school counselors are tasked with providing services to all of the students that they have in their caseload in their schools. Those would be things that we'd come back into. Part of that would be any, um, uh, any group work that would happen, any individual counseling, any career counseling, any, um, the entire school. What happens is we need, the needs are so, um, are so big at the schools that we need a social worker that then can come back and focus on individual students. Okay?
Is that more mental health oriented?
More mental health and more something that is going to not be, there's, it's more intensive. It's something that has to be able, that is not going to be just something a school counselor can hit and be able to handle. This is being able to have that resource available for, uh, more intense to be able to see what we can do that so that that person is not disrupting the class. It's not holding up an administrator, it's not holding up school counselor. We have a dedicated resource to that particular need in those persons, uh, in those situations.
And I'd like to point out that need is not only here. When I view other districts across the state, everyone is seeing the impact since we've been back from COVID and the mental health, uh, needs that are there. So.
I, I will speak, I did a lousy job trying to, um, I did a lousy job explaining that. And as a, uh, but I will say, if anyone wants to go and watch last night's school committee meeting to watch the first hour of public comment, we had, um, social workers themselves, counselors, parents, administrators do a much better job of looking at what the importance was to advocate for those positions. I'd be remiss if I didn't be able to look at that. But that was something where, uh, for us, it reinforced that being a priority for us to be able to come back to meet those needs that are there, that we can be able to protect the learning environment.
And the other thing I want to point out that I've heard citizens say, not schools say, nor did I hear you say this. But I've heard, uh, people make comments that we are top-heavy with administration. And I think that's a catch-all thing that people like to say. I find that has never been true in Sanford. If anything, it's the opposite. Um, you really squeeze a dollar out of administration, um, here. And the number of students we have per administrator seems to be very low. Uh, so I do appreciate what our administrators are doing and what a challenge they are facing. Very different than, um, I've been retired now for, I think about eleven years. I won't tell you how old I am, but that's probably a giveaway. Um, but it was very different even eleven years ago, being administrators as it is now. Um, so I really praise our administrators for what they're doing and the fact that you are really doing a great job money-wise in that area. You made a comment about, um, we have three thousand, two hundred and twenty students now. And you talked about the seniors, the graduating seniors leaving, but the, uh, grade kindergarten kids coming in is low. Um, so we probably won't have as many kids. That might just be for next year because we have almost three hundred apartments coming to Sanford. And those apartments are going to be filled with people. And most likely, some of those people are going to have kiddos. Uh, so we probably will be increasing our numbers. And Sanford typically has been high on student numbers statewide. Uh, so I, I, that might happen next year, but I, I have a feeling our numbers will increase. So don't plan on that being low. I, I think you might be deceived and we'll need those teachers back. So those, that's the end of my, um, statements with this. And so I'm going to turn it over to the rest of the counselors.
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments, Mayor Brink. What I would say too is you mentioned that there's some things we have no control over. Some of those also, and you mentioned also the changing face of administration and in school in general. There's laws that are in place that are also things that we have to be able to come back to make sure that we're meeting those laws. And so those are coming back to be able to make sure we have the necessary resources. I will tell you that when it comes to, for example, a couple that you highlighted, administrators and social work, if you compare a school of our size with other schools, you will see that we are not top-heavy in administration. And if you're looking at what you're looking at for the, um, social work in terms of what those services are, I've started reaching out to also, uh, area superintendents, but also schools of our size. And what I'm finding is where we have our shift in our need, that is not putting us, that is not putting us, uh, heavy in those resources. I would say we're actually behind in comparison to others. Just like the challenges that we're seeing in Sanford are not unique to Sanford. Those are challenges that are coming all the way around. So I just wanted to point that out.
Well, and you mentioned about the laws. There are so many pupils per administrator, so many pupils per teacher, you know, so many pupils for nurses. Um, so that's all regulated. So we think we're top-heavy until you look at that and you find out, no, we're not. You know, we could be on the verge of having problems in some areas by not having enough people. Um, so I'm going to pass this over. Um, do the counselors have questions, comments, additions that they want to make? Anne?
Well, and Madam Mayor, I have, um, two things. One, I have some general clarifying questions that would be helpful, um, to pose. And then I actually do have a, a discourse that I'd like to run through with the council in regards to the school department budget.
Okay.
So, but I don't know if other people might want to answer questions first and get those kind of.
We'll get all the questions first and then we'll do the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so Matt, to echo, uh, the mayor's comments, that was a great presentation. We appreciate the effort put into it. For clarifying questions, uh, the bridge position, which is listed as Article two removal in the current, um, slide deck was not included on the March fifth slide deck. And so it's a discrepancy. I have a spreadsheet comparison that I prepared. And so I just want to confirm that that bridge teacher is a removal and also that it's from the local budget and not ESSER funds. Because again, it's not in that March fifth presentation and it's not in my spreadsheet.
Yeah, it was in the local.
Okay, so it was just missed.
Yep. It's not an ESSER position, it's in the local.
Okay.
Yep.
And then also related to removal of positions, I didn't have the items listed, uh, I don't know what page this is, but on this page with the summary, from the twelve thousand, three twenty-nine, um, to the two thirty-nine, ninety-six and twenty thousand respectively, um, in my removed positions either. And I guess what I want clarification on is those aren't actually removed. They're just being moved to a different funding stream. Is that correct? So they're not leaving the school department. They're just being moved to a, can you explain that a little bit further?
Sure. There's some, uh, the district, um, under elementary, two academic coaches to title. Yep, those are in the local budget right now. So for us, they're being moved out of the local budget. They're important to us. So what we've had to do is restructure our title funds to be able to come back, to be able to do that. And that's something we're doing with an impact there. But that's us looking at to try to prioritize what our needs are in those positions. So coming out of local, but not going away.
Okay. And then were there shifts within that, those title funds to that same extent to make that happen? Meaning, or maybe the question is, do we have increased title funds that allowed us to make that shift? Or did we have to reduce?
No, we're cutting staff.
Okay, okay. And I don't see them listed in the removed positions, do I?
That they're coming from title and we've got to make sure we handle that sensitively and communicate that appropriately.
Okay. And then, uh, similar, I guess for the, is it the same situation with the administrative assistant to IDEA and the two ed techs?
Correct. They're moving in, they're moving from local and changing percentages, increasing percentages that are going to be picked up through the IDEA grant.
And I'm sorry, that's a grant you said?
It's, um, it's, uh, similar to Title One. It's a funding source that they have in special ed. That's allowing you, a district our size, to be able to have those funds, to be able to have us navigate those.
Okay. So it's all special ed funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 sorry.
Thank you, that's super helpful. Um, and then did I understand correctly, just from my notes, that the projected twenty-five, twenty-six impact in the future for several years, transportation, um, increase will be five percent? Is that, so it won't be quite the horrible eighteen percent we're seeing this year, but certainly a increase moving forward?
Correct.
Okay.
That's part of the sustainability also. It won't be the three percent we've had the last five years prior to this one. But it is going to be the contract we've signed, we're expecting a five percent increase, correct?
Thank you.
And not to the level of, um, some of those percentages were higher for our monitors and athletics. You won't, that'll right-size, but it'll be five percent.
Okay, thank you, that's good clarification. And then, um, also the reconciliation from my spreadsheet of positions added to yours doesn't include the, um, your additions on that page doesn't include the CGL social worker, which is included on the May fifth slide deck for eighty, sorry, yes, eighty thousand, four eighty-nine.
Did we miss that?
So, um, I had from the March fifth slide deck an added position of a CGL social worker for eighty thousand, four eighty-nine. Sorry, it's not on this. Okay, so it's just missing from this summary sheet.
Yeah, good check, good catch, we missed that.
Okay, sorry. So that is still staying in?
Correct, yes.
Good, good.
Yeah, good catch because I probably have people, um,
Panicking?
That area coming back to be able to say what's going on. So that's an oversight in our part as we transit, as we transfer that over.
And I'm almost done with my questions. Um, remind us again, Matt, with the three thousand, two hundred and twenty students, does that include our SRTC sending students or is it only Sanford? Okay, thank you.
Those are only Sanford students pre-K through grade twelve.
Thank you.
Not the sending schools from SRTC.
And not adult ed either then?
Not adult ed.
Thank you. And then, um, my last question is related to the health insurance. And there was discussion about a potential additional correction. Can you share how much that might be or is that still? So if you drop to the fourteen percent versus the fifteen- So if you drop to the 14% versus the 15% that was discussed at yesterday's budget meeting, is there a sense of what that dollar value would look like without my doing the math?
Off the top of my head, I'm going to look to Cheryl, 64,000? 66,242.
And I understand that's not any kind of hard number at this point.
Nope.
And then my last comment, and this is something that Chair Sevigny mentioned at the meeting yesterday, and I think is really important to talk about and urge my fellow counselors and the folks in Augusta who might be listening to this. But with the struggles our youth have had, the need to advocate in Augusta and even at the federal level for EPS formulas that include social workers seems phenomenally important to me. So I hope that we can all get behind that effort and try to make some change there. And I appreciate that comment being said yesterday. So that's it for my questions, thank you.
Thanks, Anne. One of the other things I just wanted to point out before we keep going, we had a decrease in subsidy by $567,000. So that would have really helped if they hadn't decreased that. Our numbers would be a lot better.
They would, and I'm going to, I'm going to take a risk here with my fellow counselors, okay? That, all of, people who have lived in Sanford or living in Sanford, the valuation of your house is worth more, but your day-to-day expenses are not. That's the challenge. But I do think there's been new valuation that has come into Sanford that is not on that. And that was something that I think we're probably going to see next week in terms of what that is. And that's where I would say, that money coming in, I know the challenge would be put that to tax relief. I would also say that would be something that could help the school department find that shortfall of $567,000. If I, if we were to go to this last slide, okay? And, hold on. And you see that 8.4%. If you were to add $567,000 to that, that 8.4% would then come down to 4.9.
I just thought.
And I say that, that I'm, this is not, this is, I'm the voice of the school in this budget. This budget was not developed in one room. It was developed with input to come back. And I will tell you, with everything that we're facing up, pretty proud of that. But that, once again, I apologize if I'm overstepping my bounds. But that 567,000 I pointed out, because I do think that that is something that the formula is telling us that we should be able to have from the local. I recognize totally that that, how that lands. But if you do, you're now looking at a percentage when people look at 8.4 and now coming back and saying, whoa. I'd also want to point out that any 1% increase for us in expense is a 3.7% increase in taxation. So if I come in and I'm giving you a 3% budget increase, you're going to also see that impact on taxation with that. So I say that not to, that those are the challenges that we face. And we're up for those challenges, but I hope I didn't offend anybody.
No, and I just remember over the years, the, we were always afraid of the decrease in subsidy. Because we knew at some point it was going to hit us in the face. And it's kind of, it has a good part to that, because that means Sanford is doing better. We have our evaluation of our homes, we have more homes happening, we have more additions happening to our homes. We have a lot of stuff happening in Sanford. The bad part is, is that our citizens aren't keeping, their income isn't necessarily keeping up with some of that. And it also hurt our schools because of that. So do you understand that decrease, that if that hadn't happened this year, they'd be golden? All right. Any other questions you guys have? I know it was a lot to ingest tonight. Jonathan?
So, thank you. I think something I've been getting a lot of questions about, and maybe you can address, is I'm seeing in Article I where you're having some teacher positions that are being dropped or appear to be being dropped in lieu of social workers, most, a lot of social workers. So can you speak to why there's that shift in that need enough so that you would be dropping those previously filled positions in order to keep these, what appear to be ESER positions?
Sure. Do you want me to talk more about on the social work side or more on the positions that are leaving? Because there's an impact for those positions that are being removed from the budget with that. And, but we feel that the needs of what we're seeing, and we also prioritize, Jonathan, early intervention, to be able to come back and be able to intervene with the needs that our students are bringing, especially at our elementary schools. To be able to have that intervention, to be able to work on that at that time so that we can be able to have something that's not going to be costing us down the line. It's not something that someone's going to be referred into special education. Those are things that we can come in and be able to intervene early on. That's important to us. I talk about a disruptive learning environment, where we're here trying to learn and we've got somebody who, based on what they're dealing with, they're just not in a position where they can come in and be able to learn, they're disruptive. It's not like we can just tell that kid to get away or we have to be able to suspend them or move them. We want to be able to come back and intervene. That's going to help that student, it's going to help the other students be able to learn, and it's going to be able to help our teachers get back to being able to teach so that they're not going to have to be in a situation where I'm working on this particular piece with this particular student or students. We also feel that those needs are, justify where those positions are to be able to, to come back and realize that's an ask, but also realize that that's, and if you look at the work that we did, that was a priority that we identified for that.
Jonathan, I'm going to give you an example of what I experienced as a principal, just with one student. And understand, I had multiple students like this. There was one student who, all of a sudden in the middle of the class, would stand up and, Stacy, you might remember this stu- would throw furniture across the room. We immediately had a code that, that they would clear that classroom. I would get on the intercom, I would do a practice lockdown because you don't want to have the student have an audience. We would have the police, the paramedics, an ambulance come. It would take five of us to get that student out of the classroom. And let me tell you, I was bruised from head to toe doing this. And yet we were all trained, Stacy was very good at making us take these programs so we could be trained on how to safely move that child to a safe environment. And so we would get the child into the ambulance, five of us, to get the child into the ambulance and then to the hospital. That meant the whole school was disrupted because of one child. We only had one social worker at the junior high because at that point, people didn't think social workers were important. And now we know how very important they are. It's very different than when we were in school and what is needed. So understand, I had more than just that one child. So I only gave you an example of one. And if we could have had a social worker working more with that student, it would have helped. And, and in the defense of that student, that child had been through a lot in life. So a lot of our kids, from very little to the age that they were at, had been through a tremendous amount. So it wasn't something that this child without outside help could control. And that's what a social worker does. And that's probably why I'm so passionate about social workers being in the school system, because I've seen firsthand the difference that that would make. Also, I would like to point out that the junior high still doesn't have an all program. So just, I'm going to keep on that for a while. All right, Anne?
So if nobody else has clarifying questions, I put together a presentation, which if you want to take one and pass it down. I should wait a minute before I did that to preface it with, I think it's very difficult for counselors to, especially when we're not all at every budget meeting or have been watching the school department for years and years and years, to get our hands around the net change in taxation and your budget in general. It's challenging, EPS funding is challenging. And Cheryl did an amazing job last year schooling us, if you will, on that. But it's a challenging budget to get our hands around. It's especially challenging this year, because we do have what I'll call an anomaly in that we have ESER-funded positions ending. And so, as many of you know, I'm a numbers person. For me, I really wanted to see, and I think this is helpful for the council to see, a little bit more of a separation of what is the impact of those ESER funds that we're moving to local versus just what I'll call our regular operating budget. And I want to say that I prepared my analysis based on March 5th, as well as a couple pieces I gleaned from the meeting yesterday morning or yesterday afternoon at the budget meeting. It does not include everything here, so it's already changed, is what I want to be careful about. So consider it not hard numbers, because they've already changed based on conversations that have happened tonight, so we can update them. If it's a helpful tool, what I would, and the feedback from my fellow counselors that it's helpful, I would ask that we work with Cheryl to dial it in and to make sure it's accurate from both of our perspectives, and we can use it as a tool to move forward. So, that being said, I think it's really important to look at those ESER positions. And Matt, you touched upon that you're aware of the conversations we had when we received ESER, or even before we received ESER funds, right? When we're talking about the budget cycle going into those ESER years. As a reminder to my fellow counselors, my school committee members, all of the folks here, as well as the budget committee that was at the table when those conversations happened, I went back and I watched, believe it or not, all those meetings from the last several years. I did not have gray hair then, it was amazing. And I'm like, wow, I got gray hair during COVID. But anyway, I did pull out a couple excerpts that I want to share. And I'm sharing these again as a reminder to what the discussions were around ESER funds. So on March 25th of 2021, in discussion of using ESER funds to try to get our students back to school five days, our superintendent Nelson said, "We're trying to look at that focus, meaning opening for five days. A lot of those funds are funds that will eventually go away. They are federal funds, so we want to make sure that we are not building those into our budget as permanent positions." That year, we added 52 positions totaling 3.1 million dollars to our school department budget. The following year, almost to the day, March 24th, 2022, after a school department presentation and a Q and A, and I think these are still budget workshops, right? Maura Hurley, he said, "One thing that will continue to concern me is that the ESER positions are not sustainable long-term. Has there been thought to hire by contract, which makes it easier to understand that these positions may lose their funding at the end of COVID?" I don't know if you remember that. It's a long time ago. And superintendent Nelson responded, "I'll start with the positions that you talked about and the worry that the ESER funds in terms of what's going to happen to those when they expire. We have taken the approach in terms of positions that we hired, and we hired a number of them this past summer leading into the school year. We were very upfront with the people that we hired in terms of letting them know that this position was covered with federal funds and it was not part of the local budget. And we let them know what we had for federal funding and an idea that we had three years to spend the funds and overall, no guarantees. That year, we kept 50 positions in the budget totaling 3.5 million dollars. In '23-'24, we dropped to 33 positions at 2.4 million. The current proposal for '24-'25 is to keep 14 ESER positions at 1.1 million and pay for them with a local budget." So again, a reminder to all of us about the conversations that we had about ESER funds. So that being said, I have a million spreadsheets, and again, I want to reconcile mine to the school departments. My numbers are different from yours, and I think it's because I'm trying to separate operating versus ESER positions. So what I'm coming up with is that we added local positions of $163,949. This is from March 5th slide deck. And we subtracted about 620,000 local positions for a net reduction or a decrease in local positions of about $460,000. We then proceeded to add 1.14 million ESER positions and $112,000 of grant positions. Is it, I'm too close?
Yeah, you're, every time you breathe, it, you can't hear what you're saying.
I'll stop breathing.
Stop breathing.
Thank you. And so, I just want to make sure people can hear me. So essentially, we have a net increase in my numbers of $770,000 of ESER positions. And I think the difference is because I'm not using, and I will advocate for not using increases in EPS funding or certain funding streams to offset those ESER positions. And I'll talk more about that. And again, I think that's a good place for more conversations to be had. So at that 770, and I should have said, Matt, that folder right there has a copy of this, if that's helpful at all, for you.
I'm listening, I, I think, you know, respectfully, you've seen how I've offset those positions.
So of the 770, I then did recognize adjustments for several items. One is the direct offset for required positions in our ESOL, in our, English as a second language, ESOL. So I did take the 770, I reduced it by 185. I also didn't include the, excuse me. I also removed the mowing position of 21,000 that the city shifted to the school department. And I adjusted for $75,000 of the remaining ESER funds that would be available going into next fall. So I had myself an adjusted net increase in positions of 482 based on that position that I didn't have in my list. I believe it's actually $80,000 lower than that now, so again, the numbers have already shifted. But what this means to me, when we look at a net increase to taxation of what was 11% last week, is we can now separate it into two parts, right? So you can then look at that net increase to taxation, sorry, that's for you guys. And we can bifurcate it essentially into two pieces. One being the net increase to taxation related to the ESER positions, which again are now a little bit different from my $482,000 figure. And the rest being for regular, what I call, operations. Which essentially, it means that there's a 3% increase in our net to taxation due to those ESER positions, based on my calculations. And there's a 7% increase to net to taxation based on just regular, what I call, regular operations for that combined 10%, which again, has already changed some. So I just think it's important as a council that we look at it from two perspectives, as one potential way to look at this. One being really hammering our understanding of what we want to do with bringing ESER funds into local. And then looking at just the regular, if you will, operational budget of the school department. At a 7% increase to regular net operations, I'm honestly not looking for more on that piece. Do you know what I mean? Like, I think it's hard to get there, I think we'll recognize at the city level that a 7% increase is going to be hard for us to get to. And it's because of cost of living, benefits, all of those things that have already been discussed. But the ESER, the increase in ESER positions is the piece that is really troubling to me. And I hear, I couldn't quite reconcile your reductions. I'm really looking at positions. And so again, my reductions are limited to the English as a second language funding of 185, the mowing, and the 75,000 ESER funds. When we look at that special education funding, I think what bothers me about that is your turn-the-page funding, or turn-the-page on your special education. I question if that 264 is in excess of the turn-the-page increase, if that makes sense. Meaning, I think we can't allocate increases to special education funding when our special education is increasing on its own. Does that make sense? So special education without additional ESER positions is increasing, the turn-the-page increased. I have that number. So the turn-the-page on special ed increased by a million dollars. What did our revenue increase by?
801,605.
Right. So we're still short in special education, so we can't, in my mind, we can't plug, we can't allocate increased special education funding against, I don't understand how you're impacting. So you're saying our, sorry, let me back up. When I look at this, I see the turn-the-page increase of a million. Right? And our special education funding went up only 800,000?
That's, yes, that's the additional subsidy we received for special ed.
So to me, there's just a gap. So, to me, there's just a gap in the turn-the-page numbers. Agreed. That's why I'm saying, what was the difference in the special ed funding level? I'm sorry.
The funds that we get for special ed reimbursement are two years in arrears.
Right. So, I guess what I'm, and maybe I'm not saying this well. But, and we can, when we look at the special education budget.
We can take out that special education funding, and I would probably look above to the total increase of what's added and what's being swapped out.
So, you're not adding these to the existing?
We're taking $282,667 from this year's local budget of those positions that you see there, and we're adding $264,011.
So, I guess my point on this is that we can't use, and to go to the other slide sheet that you have when you're looking at your reductions.
There's an outside place. Don't forget the outside placement cost.
$569,400 in the new law that we now have to pay for outside placement that is also coming back that that revenue is going towards.
I guess what I'm saying is on that reduction sheet, I don't know how we can argue using special education reduction against our ESER positions. Let me say it that way.
Okay, duly noted.
I don't know if you want to bring that page up real quick.
Which, which page is?
It's the page that shows your net change. I know, I should have these numbered.
That one?
Yeah. So, you're arguing a reduction in the additional positions of $264 due to special education funding. What I'm saying is we're not keeping up with our special education funding prior to these ESER positions. So, it feels like we're using it twice to me.
Okay. I still look at us being, you subtract that out, we're still less than what we add, and then the reduction is also more.
So, we could dig into those numbers further. Does that, do you see what I'm questioning?
I want to point out, we're cognizant of what we're asking. That's a big ask, but I'm also offering up things that I also know that there's an impact on. That's what we've done all along to come back to be able to do that. We don't look at it through spreadsheets. We look at it through what is the impact and the need that we have in front of us? And what are we going to be able to put our resources in to be able to do it? In a way that has to understand and be fair, that is going to come back to say, wait a minute, we're not going to be able to just come back and add, add, add.
Which is why our taxpayers rely on us to look at the numbers in the spreadsheets. So, that being said.
I'm telling you, from what I presented from my standpoint, I also stand behind that.
Okay. I guess I'll need more information on the reductions laid out differently. And so, I feel like we can probably get to a place of mutual understanding by potentially having a further conversation. I think the difference is that we're not looking at positions to positions, and we're using other funding streams to reduce ESER positions, which would otherwise go into our regular budget and offset existing costs.
I think what you see is the impact of the local taxpayer here. That's what we've come back to be able to look on.
But we need to see that impact specifically for the ESER positions. And you, and I don't think these additions include. Whoops, I'm sorry.
Are you saying that in using new funding to continue to fund ESER positions, you're not showing the true, like, if we didn't have those ESER positions, we could use that new funding to offset positions that are existing? Existing in the budget.
And I'm telling you, there's a whole list of them that I need before we do that. I understand where you're coming from. From our standpoint, we have a whole list that we need all of those positions. There's impact with that. That's what I'm saying is, I'd understand that if there was nothing over there to be able to look at, but there is.
Does the school funding formula through the state of Maine say to us, we want you to have these positions, the ESER positions that we're trying to keep?
The funding formula would, if it would impact it, because they would then say, if you want that position, Sanford, and it goes beyond the ratios, you have to be able to come and pay that. I don't think we're going to be losing any money in any of those ESER positions that are coming back. There's no impact there that we're looking at a loss of subsidy because of those positions.
I'm not saying loss of subsidy. I'm saying that the subsidy doesn't pay for it, so it's a local-only cost.
Yes, social workers.
Correct. Social workers, yeah.
The state of Maine has not recognized.
Correct.
Right? So, the state of Maine will not assist us in having those positions.
As it stands now, and like councillor Hanselman said earlier, we need to advocate for that. We've begun those processes, and that's something that's going to be important.
So, I'll go back to my comment from 2020, whatever, and say, you know, there's, and I've talked to a social worker about this, there's something to be said for the fact that if you are putting social workers or councillors in, why are we hiring them through the school budget? Why are we not looking at providing space in the schools? And then they can build, you know, they can bill themselves. You know, we just provide them a space to meet with kids. We connect them with kids. Because I know people who are supposed to be getting outside counselling. The school's probably just managing it for now. And if they could have better access to outside councillors, insurance would help pay for it.
Correct.
And so, that's, you know, the local taxpayer is essentially paying healthcare.
And what I would say.
If we could do it a different way.
Yep. And I would tell you, that's not happening because with the, and we do have councillors from Sweetser that are part of, that we contract, we give them space that they work through that insurance. If you heard last night at the public comment of our, at our school committee meeting, you know that we're down one of those positions at the elementary school. The middle school, the person's out on medical leave, and the high school position is open and hasn't been filled. And so, those are situations where, believe me, if we had that being able to meet our needs, we wouldn't be here making that request. But it's not, it's not meeting the needs in terms of what we've got for that, and that's why you see it.
Do we get to bill health insurance for some of the counselling we're doing?
I don't think so, no. Not for social work, no. Special education, there's a piece of that we can, but not for social work.
You see where I'm going here? It's kind of like we're holding on to positions that are healthcare-related, and we're paying for them through local budgets when so much of our population probably doesn't have health insurance. It's just like there, we've had three years to come up with a formula, so we didn't have to have these positions. And we could have potentially a system set up that does allow kids to get help within the school system, but through healthcare. And, you know, that would have been better for the taxpayer.
I would like to point out.
Agree.
I would like to point out that I know for a fact that if Stacy could find a way to bring income in, she would do it.
I know.
And, and there are students who have no access. And what they're telling you is, there is a need, and this is how you meet that need. And if we're looking at, I'm going to use our homeless population, because I've been down in the encampments, and I recognize some of those students who, if they could have had helped back when they were in school, they would not be down there in those, in the encampments. So, I look at this as a future of Sanford and preventing stuff from happening. So, I know you think we shouldn't have paid for the social work, but there is no other option. If there is another option, because they're already telling you, they do have social workers within the schools who are going through insurance. But they only have a limited amount because they can't get anymore.
Madam Mayor, with all due respect, before we get in the weeds, I really want to focus on, so when I talk about ESER-funded positions, I'm really looking for the dollar, and I'm not doing a good job, so I apologize for that, explaining, I think, what I'm looking at. But I'm literally taking, here's all the positions we took out of local, and it was only $620,000. Here's all the positions we moved into local. Here's all the ESER positions we moved in. I hear that you're saying I have other offsets, and I agree to the ESOL funding position. I would like to talk about those other offsets, and for example, moving to grant funding or moving to, whatever it might be. Because my argument would be that we could use those funds. If not for these ESER positions, other revenue and other funds would be used to cover our existing budget, which would lower net-to-taxation. So, if we pretended these ESER positions were not here, and again, it's the ESER funding that's bothering me, not the positions. I trust 100% the ability of our school department and our school committee to make the best decisions about what positions stay, go, what we do. I 100% believe you will do the best for our community on that. What I'm looking at is the numbers related to ESER funds that are still here. And I hear what you're saying, that they're removed. But even this work, these worksheets are not clear as crystal, I would say. And I can't reconcile any of your numbers to my numbers. And just for example, when we look at positions removed from local budget and ESER positions added, you've missed the addition of all the positions to the local budget that were in addition to the ESER funding. So, meaning we're not just adding $1 million of ESER positions. We're adding some other positions as well.
Not many.
$164,000.
One ESOL teacher. Yeah, one ESOL teacher that we have funding for. And the pre-K, and the pre-K ad text there that we knew was a grant that we had this conversation a year ago at this time, that that would be coming.
But that's part of the decision-making process with the ESER funds, is what I'm saying. So, we can't add, I firmly believe that we are adding funding to the local budget that was previously covered by ESER funds without a full offset.
I respectfully disagree. And I'll have to come back and look at the numbers, but it's been done with the idea of, we're looking at the impact of local budget taxpayers.
Yeah, let's dig into it.
I mean, that's where I'm coming from, in terms of, if there's positions there of, I was trying to follow you, Anne, on the last point that you made about ongoing. And I, you kind of, you kind of moved off of that. So, we're back on to where this is. But in terms of what we are, what you see is impact coming into local, what is being taken out of local. If you're talking about the funding streams and how that comes back and impacts down, I want to be able to follow that. That has not been, that wasn't front and center of our decision-making. I also don't think that we're trying to not be upfront in terms of that. I think we're trying to be able to pay attention to, if what we're going to ask our local taxpayers to take on those ESER funds, what are we also going to be removing from that? That's what we've got. That's what the team and everyone feels is in the best interest.
And perhaps there's just some misunderstanding on what would be an eligible offset, or some, currently some disagreement, if you will. I don't believe you're trying to mask anything. But I think it bears further discussion. And maybe a better example is our CTE subsidy. And again, I have to say, I find these, a lot of effort went into these, but I find them not super clear from a budgetary standpoint. I'll also say I am an Excel person, so perhaps that's why. But when we look at CTE, what article is that?
Three.
So, perhaps it's the discussion, and I know we have Band Fest, so I want to recognize that a lot of people need to get out of here. And I'm happy to, we can push this to next week as well, if we need to. But.
Is there a way to get, is there a way to get clarity so that, you see, you're looking at it one way, she's looking at it another? Never the twain shall meet unless we sit down and have a conversation that's a little, so she can explain, take your numbers and show it this way instead, maybe, so that I can see it. She's right. I mean, you're looking at it article to article. You look at it by people. You look at it by the kids. And there has to be, there's a more technical way of looking at that. I think that's what it is.
And I think what's hard is we have, and I'm sorry, I'm going to be quiet. Just so you can speak. We have included in these slide deck other, like, supplies moved to Perkins and additional subsidy. So, again, my argument is additional subsidy, and CTE, I think, is a good example of this, shouldn't be used to fund ESER positions. It should be used to.
The idea of moving to Perkins is because when you put positions in Perkins, you have to pay, you have to pay a penalty for that. So, now we're coming back to be able to maximize those funds and being the offset of what we're seeing. So, that, it's not trying to, I see from your perspective, I just, that's not what the intent is.
I think we need to separate the ESER funding going to local from everything else. And if I'm the only.
Can I ask what, what is, what is the reason why? Just so I can, if I understand the why, then it might help me be able to come back to see the.
Because when we look at the net impact of positions coming and going out of our budget, and we look at the positive, the increase to net-to-taxation because of increased ESER positions, we need to look at that number compared to just the overall increase that we all know we're experiencing in our houses and in our budgets, at the municipal and school department level separately. So, I want to see what's the impact to the school's budget for just the regular stuff. It's big, right? It's like seven and a half, eight percent probably. And then what's the impact because of ESER positions coming in, which I think is about 3%.
But we're also ignoring what is coming out.
No, no, I'm not. We're disagreeing on what's coming out. So, I'm saying that increased subsidy and funding and grants should impact the taxpayer and reduce our exist, so if ESER didn't exist, right? So, we didn't have ESER positions and our CTE subsidy increased, we would have additional money to offset our turn-the-page increases or whatever, normal expenses. That's my point.
Okay.
Which reduces net-to-taxation.
Yep. And I'm trying to meet the needs of the school department. So, that's where, I guess, is it comes into it that I'm also not blind to taxation either, as we're coming back to be able to.
And what I'd like to know, if I'm, if I'm the solo voice on this, then let's not expend time. So, I really want to hear.
So, just kind of reading between the lines, I think what might be helpful, especially for us numbers folks, is instead of a bunch of slides, a spreadsheet with all the numbers, all the expenses, all the positions, everything. Because looking at just increases and decreases is, makes it a little bit hard to follow. So, I think that would be helpful and.
They don't use Excel. I don't know if, you can't, they can't just drop it into Excel without a pretty big effort.
No.
No.
If they give me the numbers, I'll drop it in Excel. Do we have Power BI yet?
Right.
So, I just want to point out this slide, okay? And so, that's not, that's not helpful. And then, this slide with the, taking away the special ed piece of that, my sense is continuing to keep the ESOL, that's not helpful.
So, I think, I think what Anne's point is, is that the ESER positions were special positions that everyone, or most of us had at least discussed, that those would not be permanent. And that some of these slides are rolling in additional funding that may apply to positions that are existing that may or may not be cut to offset some of the ESER positions. Am I correct?
Would we lose funding if all the ESER positions were gone? Would any of our state subsidy go away? Any other subsidies go away?
I, on the, off the top of my head, I don't think so.
Well, we have to keep that English as a second language has to stay. And there's some special, I mean, there are some positions that I don't know.
So, I think that's, you know, which positions would we lose funding if we, if the position went away? And it was an ESER position, correct? That's kind of what it is.
Is it the will of the council to take all the ESER positions out and put the ones that are being removed back in?
No. And just to be clear, when you look at this reduction of 1.2, those aren't all positions. Those are net changes in your numbers. Maybe that's a different way to phrase it.
So, staffing.
That's just staffing?
That's just staffing, yeah.
I don't see how you're coming up with those numbers. Oh, well, you're including ESER positions in that change, in staffing?
Not in the reduction.
In the reduction?
Only in the ad.
So, were those reductions not included in the documents last week? Because when I take all of the reductions to the budget in local, I only have $620,000. So, I have no idea how you're coming up with, right? So, I took that worksheet. Right. But the reduction of 734, where is that coming from?
On the.
Right. It's not just staffing.
Okay.
If you're talking.
If you're talking, could you come up to a mic because we're televised?
Article one.
Right there. They're, they're right there on the table. Right, so shifting to the grant funding, which I don't, I don't count as a reduction in. So maybe that's the discrepancy. And those, those positions weren't included on the March 5 slide deck either.
So if you look at the, on that last, that slide of the summary, 792080 is under Article 1 for increases. And the 734, 781 is your reduction.
So my point on this, for example, is that I don't believe that we should take the 239, 304, which is moving to a different funding stream, but still, so, we're not, I don't think we can call that a reduction.
It's a reduction out of the local budget. The taxation budget, it's reducing it.
But you're offsetting it against ESER positions. So what my point is, I guess, that I'm not doing a good job explaining perhaps, is that if we used those funds within that title to fund non-ESER positions, we would see a reduction in our net to taxation request from our taxpayers.
So we're reorganizing title, which is allowing us to move those positions into title by changing methodology, which we can't talk about right now completely. But, and also- two retirements, right.
That's fine.
So we're changing some methodology that allows us to move that money.
And maybe that's a bad example, but so the difference between my numbers and yours-
We're trying to move more things from local into those grants so it'll reduce taxation.
Which is great.
No, that's what you're trying to do. That's what you'd like, that's what, that, you would say if those two, without the ESER positions, we could move even more into-
That grant, yes.
Grant to be able to cover that.
Yes, and reduce net to taxation.
And impact our students and their services that we're delivering to them.
Yes, there's going to be an impact, because we, we took 33 positions into this year. So of course there's going to be an impact. We knew. And, and I just want to be really clear that my, I want to have a moment to reflect that my lack of support for an increase to taxation related to ESER funds, and I'm wanting to dig into this, is not a reflection of my lack of support for our school department. So I just want to make sure that's said, because I feel very strongly and passionately about our school department. And we might get to the same page, but I just think that we need to discuss it further. So, and maybe I'm alone in thinking that other increases, and maybe this is a bad example, so maybe this 239 is fine, but, you know, can we go to the Article 3 for a second? I want to just make sure you understand where I'm coming from, and then we can agree to disagree, and then-
I think that's where we're at, agreeing to disagreeing. No, I have a better understanding now of what you're trying to use our grants for to to further reduce locals so you don't have to have the ESER positions. And that just does not run consistently with anything that we've come back to present this evening.
And, and just to say again, it's not the ESER positions, it's the funding coming from ESER into local. So you could say, I can't even make it up, but you could say that you're going to change something else that would impact programming potentially and still have an impact, because everything is impactful. But it doesn't have to be a position. Do you know what I mean? So I just want to be clear that I'm not looking at specific positions. I'm looking at the funding. I'm looking at the numbers. And I feel strongly that we have ESER funding coming, that was money coming into our local budget. And I don't think that's fair to taxpayers.
Okay.
Anne, would this look cleaner to you if they had presented a budget with all ESER positions here, the funding for them, and you said, we're taking that out. But this is what our school system needs. And so it would have been clear what the increase now would be to our budget without any ESER funds involved. Because you, are you in agreement that we might still need some positions, additional positions, because of our growth and our-
I guess, I don't want to say I don't care about the positions, because I care about the positions, but I don't, from a budgetary standpoint, what I want to know is the actual increase to net to taxation that is still on the books related to the previously funded ESER positions. And I think the discrepancy between what the school department is sharing and what I'm looking at is what they're counting as a offset and what I'm counting as an offset. I'm very, my offsets are very specific. They're positions. And there's very little an actual reduction of positions. So like, I get where we have some funding that comes in and covers positions and we have grant monies, but my argument would be that that money should help reduce, so like, we have TIF funds, right? We have more money coming into our budget. I don't want to just go spend that, sorry Steve, on paving our parking lot. I want to spend that on an existing budget item to reduce taxation, like our trails, which we talked about. So just to kind of segue to what our speak is. So I, I think that there's money that's used as a reduction that to me doesn't feel like an actual reduction.
I would like to also point out that I went back and looked at several years. And there was something else that counselors also said multiple times, including Bob, I wish Bob was here, because he always talks about the cliff. And he also said that there will be years, like right now, where we need to watch how much money we're spending, because we need to give the taxpayers in Sanford a break. And that was, I looked at last year and the year before, and that was said. And he said, when we can afford it, we need to add certain things to our budget. And when Sanford went from an income level, a median level of $45,000, now we're up in the 60s, when is the point that we're going to say, we're going to now add to the budget that we're presenting? So I don't think that the budget is that far off from what I think is acceptable. I, I'm confused about, because you just made the comment about reducing it for the taxpayers. Well, we've done that multiple years. So when does it come time that the city and the schools come up to par, because we are low compared to other communities? Not only are we low for the schools, we are low for the city. So, and I'm really concerned about when we get to the city side, are we now going to talk about not paving our roads, our infrastructure? I'm just, I think, I guess I thought this was the year that we would increase. And so I'm kind of disappointed.
Anne, I think, I apologize, I'm a little slow, but I think I understand what we boiled this down to, is you're looking for the use of our grants to further impact taxation. Beyond, when you boil that down, okay? What I would tell you is, from a, from a 20,000-foot view, those are federal grants that are very specific. So we've looked at those to be able to restructure those in a way that meet our needs, that also meet the idea of the grants. Some of those positions that are there, that you want to move in to reduce taxation, I don't want to come back and say no without looking at them. But in general, that's not something, that's not a strategy that's usually used with that. That's-
Maybe we can talk more about those positions.
Yeah.
Like the coaches, for example.
So I think that, that to me is how I, I understand, I think what you're looking to be able to do to come back to further help taxation. I just want to be able to look at how we've done it, also, and how you want to be able to do it, might not be able to even be possible with what the requirements of the grant are.
And I just want to share that, because we didn't even get to it, but we're within $200,000, like, which is a big number and impactful, but maybe not insurmountable. And that's just my number, so I don't know where other people are. But when I, when I do the analysis of the ESER funds that are still there, and then I look at your tier-one adjustments, like, we're not that far off. I think we're, my numbers are within like $200,000 of additional reductions needed.
So, and I'm going to say, we're seeing an increase in here.
You're looking at these tier, that's what you're considering there? That's tier one and two. I just want to be able to put that out there.
Just let everybody know, we are looking at a significant increase, no matter what. I mean, we're arguing between what, we're not arguing. We're discussing 7 and 8.4. And you know, this is where we are. There's going to be a significant increase. We're not talking about massive, let's go get down to 2% for the taxpayer. We can't do that this year. There's no way.
Thank you.
Because I know the mayor's stressing over here. So we're, we're down to the, it's sad, but that's what we're looking at. We're going to have to place before the voters is a a significant increase in the school budget. And we know it's not all that we need. I mean, you started off, I believe, at the 30% range before you got down to this, so, so everybody in TV land understands, this is, this is not going to be, this is going to be significant this year.
What would, in terms of what would you like to see from us going forward for next steps or where, where to help with this incredible challenge?
Hold on, Pete. Go ahead.
Yeah. I would like to see, from my understanding, because this is my second, second year, and so all these discussions were before me on the ESER funds. So help me understand, what was there, like 50 positions at one time or 52? Now, were we planning on keeping all 52, or were they planning on, they were gone, and then you would hire within backfill? Is that what we're doing?
Been ticking away at them for years.
No, the, we knew, we knew that that was coming, and we are working our way towards that. A lot of what we use these funds were, were addressing to make sure we could get our kids back to school, full-time, in-person, five days a week. That would be address any learning loss, any educational recovery that was needed. And it was also the social emotional needs of our students. And so we've been able to move away from getting our kids back to school, back to those, back to those class sizes that we saw originally. When it comes to the social emotional piece, you'll see the majority of those positions that we have on there come from that way. We've come back to identify that as a focus and a priority, not trying to put that on the taxpayer. We're also going back that there's other things that are now needed, but that we're going to be able to prioritize these more. That's the nutshell of it. I think you can disagree in how we've come back to be able to look at that. We're looking at it to the impact on the taxpayer and to the local budget.
And Pete, to answer part of your question, throughout the last couple of years, we've already taken away the ESER positions. Is that correct?
Some, yeah. We've been working towards that. The first, between the first and second year, there weren't many. But through this past year, coming into this one, there was.
Yep.
From where that was. But there's still, as you can see, there's a number of what is going away that's currently this year, both what we're recommending be moved into local and also the other ones that are also just going away.
Right.
And Pete, when you fully understand this, let me know.
Yep. Oh, I've been trying. I've been keeping track of it. So I just wanted to make clarification on-
It is difficult. We do depend upon Anne a lot.
Right.
Yeah. Anyone else down? Okay. Go ahead.
I mean, I've been quiet, just so you can understand where I'm coming from here. I understand that there's a lot of things that are outside of your control, our control, that have raised costs. So I think I'm leaning more towards what the deputy mayor was saying about how there's like, I understand there's going to be an increase here, whether I like it or not, there's going to have to be something like that. But to Councilor Hansman's point, I do think it's worth the extra scrutiny of the funding that came, initially came from ESER. And again, ultimately, it's your call and the school board's call about how those funds come in. But it's just became, it was a promise that, we know this is, this is temporary, so it's worth examining that to see, you know, is there anything, anything more we can do in terms of, you know, checking on that funding? And so that's, that's where I'm coming from. I, I agree that we're probably going to end up having to be close. I wish we were in this position, but a lot of this is outside of our control, so I understand.
Maura?
I'm good.
You're good? Anne?
Well, just as a further point of clarification, or maybe food for thought, and for another example, when we look at that correction to health insurance, because that's really what it is, right? It's a correction to the originally budgeted health insurance rate coming down, which is good news. But I wouldn't use, I would not use that correction or that reduction in our health insurance costs as an argument to fund an ESER position. I would use that as a reduction to net to taxation against the turn-the-page significant increases in our existing budget. So that's where I'm coming from. I think that's a more tangible example, if that makes sense, what I'm saying. So I want to be really careful that we're separating those expenses that are operating, normal expenses and revenue from the shifting of ESER positions into local funding. And you can keep every single one of those ESER positions, the actual positions themselves, if you take it out somewhere else. So I'm not going to tell you where to move money around or how to do it, but if we determine there are ESER funds still in our numbers, which I believe there are from my perspective, I'd like to see a further, I'd like to see them be reduced.
And we're not taking them out of local already?
Correct.
Okay, agree to disagree, I guess, in terms of that. You think you've already pulled them out of local? It looked- That's what, that's the intent that we've come back. If we haven't met to that level or come back, we'll take that as, as what you want for direction, but I also don't, I think that's up there in terms of how we're looking at that. I, I, I don't see us, I would disagree that any changes that we have in health insurance, just like any changes in electricity, we're not trying to fund ESER positions out of that. You look at it that way, that's not how we're doing it. We're trying to lower taxation to be able to keep-
That's good. I'm saying we shouldn't. So good, we're on the same page.
I think you guys just agreed.
No, you know, I'm saying, we can't use those funds for-
Wait a minute. That's amazing.
Yeah, we can't use reductions in health insurance.
Right, he's saying the same thing.
Right, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I thought you wanted to use those for ESER, to, oh, I misunderstood. Okay. My apologies.
We need to go home.
And I think it's really just a difference of educators' thinking when you create a budget as compared to an accountant who's brilliant. You guys just have a different mindset on how you word things. Yet I think you're pretty close to saying the same things.
Okay, I apologize for, thank you, everyone. Sorry, we have to take all that time that I was a little slow getting to that. Sorry, Anne.
And I think I can calm down now that I know nobody is going down to 2% again this year, because it can't be done. So, yeah, not happening. All right. Is there anything that you guys need to see next time that would help you? And if you can't think about it right now, please get that information to me. We'll pass it on. Because we need this done. There's a deadline date, isn't there, for the schools?
So we're going to meet at 4:00 next week for the budget, more presentation, and then at 6:00 it's a public hearing, followed by our regular meeting. Yeah. So the public hearing on the budget is 6 o'clock. So we do it at the city council. We, we, so we probably won't have public participation in the budget process next week, because it's going to be at 6 o'clock anyway, correct?
Okay, but wouldn't they, at that point, need to have what their funds needs to look like?
No, we need to listen to the public before we make decisions. That's why the, so we'll have them, the public will speak, and then that'll add to the information we have to make. They know where we're going.
So 8.4, and then is there anything in terms of, are we in the wait-and-see mode until, if we're waiting till after public comment on next Tuesday during the regular council meeting, are we waiting to the 26th? I'm just trying to make sure, I put out enough time for us, because this is going to take some work, and this is going to be some really hard decisions, just like you're wrestling with as well. So I just want to try to map out how we can be able to timeline. It's like, last week I appreciated the idea that 11.1 is not good. We've come back, we've tried to do something here. We know 8.4 is, is also high. Is there the idea of trying to, I don't want to say get to a, just to a certain number, but are we going to wait till the 26th to do that?
I could argue that you had gotten below 10. You were at 9 point something before you decided to add a program that you had decided to cut. So it's kind of, you kind of went back and forth in a week. So.
From, from February 26th?
Something, yeah, because there was, you had taken out the, I believe, the Alt Ed, and then you put it back in. That's how you got to 11.1.
Yep.
Now you've made this different decision to get to 8.4, but I think we were going to have this discussion, we probably would have had this discussion a week ago, maybe. Yeah, but I don't think 8, you know.
Maura, I'd say you're not very clear on what you're saying.
No, it's just, it's kind of, it's kind of like, we got here last week, and we had all been hearing 9 point something. And all of a sudden, we were back to 11.1, and we're like, why did they go back up? They were doing good work. And so it's almost like you lost a week because you decided to go back up to the 11.1, which was never, never a possibility to give to the taxpayers. So she's went from 11.1 to 8.4, which is probably was a more reasonable place to start.
So that being said, do you have, do you have something in mind?
Not a specific number, but I'm not necessarily sure, we need to talk to them next week, I mean, we, we need to see the cities, I'd love to see like, if, you know, the new assessment, or as much of it as we can, to see where the assessed value, what it gives us for new revenues, brand-new revenues, not adjusted assessments, but the new garages and decks and houses and stuff like that, that would help to everybody, the school and the city, so that we have a better idea of where we're headed, what we're gonna be able to sustain without too much pain.
So, Maura, you're asking for that information for next week?
That's what we were talking about, the school, the city was gonna provide better detail next week, and then we were gonna have the public hearing, and then I think we were making decisions the next week.
Okay.
That's usually what happens.
Anne, what, some of the information you would like to see next week?
So, what I'm gonna do is update all my spreadsheets based on today's slide deck, and then I'll route clarifying questions through your office.
Okay.
To try to better, and I apologize for not expressing myself very clearly, perhaps, but to better dial in the impact to net to taxation on the switch of ESER funding into local. And try to better understand some of those adjustments made on the school side that were not at all part of my numbers. So I would like to, I'll, I'll work on that personally, and then reach out with some questions. And then with the work that I have done, which is extensive amount of time thinking about and really listening, and, and I am somebody that has attended all but one school department budget meeting for years, but this year in particular, I missed one that was in your conference room, and I wasn't able to make it. I, I pay a lot of attention, I listen really closely, and I know, like, you don't have to tell me that every cut is painful, I know, and I feel it, and I, but I feel like I'm held as a counselor to a standard of trying to find that balance, and just because we care about our school department doesn't mean we can increase taxes without very careful, which you're doing also, careful consideration and thought. And I think it's our job to be a little tougher than perhaps you're being on yourself from that perspective. I'm, I'm looking for a further reduction down to seven percent.
Okay, thank you Anne. Jonathan?
So I'll, I'll just add to that, I'm looking for further reduction, and I think last time we did talk about, and I, I don't know how difficult it would be to put together, but a few different options for levels to get us to something less than what we're seeing, and then figure out what that pain level looks like that everyone's willing to accept, so, that's my two cents, thank you.
Pete, do you have a comment?
Yeah, you guys are doing a good job, so don't think that we're beating you up, we're just doing everything we're supposed to do. I would like to see the numbers at seven point five, and realistically, I think that's something we're really close to with the two hundred thousand, that'd be about seven point five, seven point four. Let's, let's see if we can hit that one, okay? Thank you.
Any comments, Nate? I know you already made a comment.
No, it's fine, so, as many people already know, this is probably my, this is my first budget season, so the, the percentages are a little lost on me here and there, you know, in terms of, I like to go through the detail, maybe not as detailed as my fellow counselor down here, but I, I did spend a few hours going through the, going through the numbers. You know, I think seeing those gradations there, I mean, just for further discussion, so we have, we're at eight point four right now, and one counselor said seven percent, we have another one saying seven point five, maybe, you know, looking at what eight percent looks like too, just to sort of see those gradations, to see, you know, what you as a school would do with those different, different valuations, while we're also looking at, you know, we've had all this discussion about the ESER funds and how, how, how that plays in, but I think seeing that will help me on a certain percentage, but I don't think we necessarily need to go lower than seven, but I would like to see those different areas, because I don't, obviously, I don't want you to have to cut certain programs that have big impact on the community if we can help it, but, just to sort of see.
Thank you very much. Maura, you got a comment?
Yeah, just for, because Steve's gonna, Steve and the information he'll bring forward is gonna play a, a decent amount into this, I, I mentioned the assessed values, but, see, I don't like to throw out percentages until I've had the public hearing, and I, I don't think it's fair, I think it's good to do a little bit of tweaking, but we don't have the assessed values. I, I'm assuming there's some revenue sharing that might, we're gonna have some additional that numbers are coming out from the state, that the, everything was good, I don't know, I don't know if the school has any hope of additional funding from the state because of that, I have no idea, it would be nice if it was.
I haven't heard anything, we have a meeting this Friday where there might be some, because I know revenues are up, but I'm also knowing that the priorities that they've set are not addressing the, so, the mental health piece.
I'm disappointed that they haven't adjusted the formula to put something in for social work, mental health, counseling, and that is probably the biggest problem we have here, is that the state isn't putting that into their formula and then funding it at fifty-five percent, that would be really nice. And then Steve, I don't know if next week you're gonna have really good examples of the typical hit to, I know you gave us a chart last week, maybe blown up a little bit better so that we can look at it.
You mean for those people with older eyes could actually see them?
Yes, yes, I know Steve's done, it's done some really good slides in the past where we can see typical homeowner, you know, and may, maybe, maybe you're at, doing a ten, and eight, and seven, or something like that, so we can see a couple of different variations, so that we, we do get an idea of what this is gonna do. As we're talking, you know, and I'll, I'll share with my fellow counselors after, but you know, I'm getting a text from a senior, who's a senior citizen, who's a homeowner, and the impact that it would have to them, and how much pain it is, and, so, it would be nice to have that next week as well, as, because you're, those matter, I think, as we're gonna, to make sure to have that in your presentation before the public hearing, I think that matters, so, and I know you're the one who does that.
Anne, I think some of the things we have to remember is that because of our valuation being higher by five hundred and sixty-something thousand has hurt the schools, because that would have been out of their budget, so we have to remember that if we have higher revenues come in, we need to share.
That just tells me the state should have adjusted their, your, their base number that they're paying on, they're just, they're, they're using it.
I just want us to, to keep that in mind. Also, I would be hard-pressed to go beyond, below seven point five, I'm closer, closer to eight, so if you know where I'm standing with this, so, kind of have an idea. So any other, well, first of all, Anne, you made a, a statement at the beginning, and you kind of apologized for what you, you did do, I'm gonna say congratulations, Anne, that you are getting us to think, I didn't think about the ESER funds and, and how that would impact that. Also, I want you to take a look at this council, we are still a good council, we are able to disagree, we're able to discuss, this is probably one of the hardest things that we do, is do the budget, it's very strenuous, especially on the school side, I think it's easier for us to cut the city side than it is the school side, sorry, sorry Steve. So, but yet, we still walk away and we're okay. So that's how adults, and I, I find that someplace in our, in, in public, we, citizens don't learn to discuss things in a rational way. And I'd like to point out, this council, we've handled some pretty tough things, and we've learned to do it rationally, and we've learned to appreciate each other's ideas. Each one of us comes from a different walk in life, and has a different background, and that helps make us a better council. So I just want to thank you guys for all that you've done tonight and all that you've put in. Matt, go ahead.
A couple of things, it's probably bad etiquette to follow up after the mayor's done, so I recognize that and I apologize that, but a couple of things, I started out by thanking you and appreciating your support, and I want to end that way. I hope that's understood, because this is very challenging. I understand, I'm here advocating for the school, I'm advocating for the kids, I understand you have much more responsibilities about that. And so, one of the things I've mentioned that I'm proud of, we're not the only communities that are struggling with this, we're actually probably out in front of it more than others. But I also know, like Mayor Brink said, we do have a pretty good working relationship that I appreciate and understand the support and the challenges there, and we will continue to be able to look for being able to do that. So I, I recognize the challenges coming in, understand from us, I'm just advocating for the school budget the best that I can, with the understanding of what you have for the responsibility of everything is understood and appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to provide foreshadowing, that I will make an argument that increased evaluation should not be used, I think we should look at the city municipal budget very hard, and very, look for the water bubbler, and I have some, I think.
Actually, you have one in your office, I saw it, by the way, I just wanted to point that out.
We, but we need to look at that before we look at the increased evaluation, because there's a part of me, and I did hear what you said earlier, Mayor, but there's a part of me that feels like, we make it, we spend it, we make it, we spend it, we make it, we spend it twice. And so, as we see increased new valuation, which does have an impact, not as big an impact as we might think, right? Because I, Steve and I have already run those numbers, and Steve has mentioned in the meeting, it's not a huge impact, but I don't know that we can just swoop that into, without still looking at cuts, do, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just like I'm asking the school department to look at their grant funding, and use it differently, perhaps, we need to do the same on our side.
Notice how I didn't really claim a percentage, because, yeah.
Jonathan?
I just wanted to follow up your statement with, you know, we're not trying to beat you up, and I understand you're representing the school, and I think we all understand that, you know, we're just trying to look out for the taxpayer side as much as you're looking out for, you know, the teachers and the, the kids, and, you know, I, I feel bad even sometime, you know, kind of having to talk about positions potentially being cut. So it's, it's hard on both sides, and, you know, we'll, we'll get there, but, just, just wanted to state that, you know, it's not something that's an adversarial thing, it's just, we're just trying to figure out what, what works and makes sense for both, for everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any other comments? Seeing as we are done, I will adjourn this meeting.